Welcome, everybody, to tonight's meeting of the Escondido City Council. Thank you for joining us. Please rise for a moment of reflection and remain standing for the flag. Salute.
Yes, please join me in a moment of reflection. We come together tonight to say thank you. Thank you for the privilege, the blessing, the honor it is to serve here in the city of Escondido. We come together tonight as a diverse community, a community of backgrounds, different beliefs, different presence and different futures. Yet one common goal, that is the betterment of this city. We come together to seek guidance, wisdom, and discernment during deliberations that transpire this evening, and in doing so, we lift up Councilmember Fitzgerald, Councilmember Joe Garcia, Councilmember Christian Garcia, Deputy Mayor Martinez, and Mayor White. May they be granted peace and wisdom as they lead our city into a bright and prosperous future. Amen.
Please join me in a pledge. Ready, begin.
Our pledge is to defy the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. This meeting is now called to order, and we'll do a quick roll call before our first presentation. Councilmember Fitzgerald.
Present.
Councilwoman Joe Garcia.
Here.
Councilwoman Christian Garcia.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Martinez.
Present.
And I, Mayor White, am here. I will now turn the time over to Councilwoman Joe Garcia for our presentation.
Wonderful. We're very excited for all of you to be here and wondering what's going on here. This is the youth and child symphonic band from the city of San Jacinto de Milpas, Oaxaca, which is one of our sister cities in Oaxaca. And they've come here for the 10th anniversary celebration of Kalislan Dance Academy, which Madisela is right here, the director. So we thought it would be wonderful to allow, to invite them to share their music with us and acknowledge their, with them, with a proclamation at this time. So I would invite all of us on the dais, maybe to go down, sit down there, so we can enjoy it, and then we'll have the presentation after their performance. How wonderful, right? Yes, let's give him a hand again. Is it on? I don't think it's on. Hello, 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 hello.
One, two, three.
Hello, hello, hello. It's muted? There you go. All right. Anyway, so we're really excited. This is all a result of our Sister Cities Initiative that we started almost a year ago. I want to thank all my colleagues for supporting this initiative, and this is the first time that we have this group like this come over. We've been to Oaxaca, and we've signed the MOUs, and, oh, sorry. Right, here we go. Let me start from the beginning, not just. So anyway, we're very excited, very thankful. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing us to be able to encroach a little bit onto tonight's meeting. We have a long agenda, so it was just a little, we call it a "prove" it. It was just a little, a little flavor, a little tasting of the music. I'll invite everyone, they will be playing live together with Kalislan Dance Academy will be dancing to their live music at our festival Sunday, starting at 9:45 on the main stage. So if you'd like to, come and enjoy their music and wonderful dancing, and that one's going to be very cultural. It'll all be about Oaxaca. It's going to be an incredible opportunity. Anyway, so now what we'd like to do is, and you can tell that they understand every single word I've said. So, lo que quisiera hacer en este momento es agradecerles a ustedes. Maestro, por favor, si usted puede venir aquí. Maestro, this is his, his translator. This is Lou, and this is, maestro, ¿su nombre?
Edson Garcia.
Oh, Garcia. All right. And the youngest member, 10 years old, is Garcia also. And actually, he's double, that's his Garcia, Garcia. So anyway, ¿cuántos de ustedes tienen tocando, maestro? ¿Usted cuando estaba? ¿Qué dijeron?
Seis años.
So, I need to, I need to, whatever, because they answer. Así de esta manera. Mas fácil porque no está algo que quisiera compartir en la.
Bueno, este, buenas tardes. Nosotros somos una banda de la Casa de Cultura, Roberto Castillo, de San Jacinto de Milpas, Oaxaca. Nosotros tenemos muy orgullosos de estar en este recinto. Esta banda tiene, bueno, la fundación de la banda tiene más de 15 años, pero pues como todas las escuelas y generaciones, y las generaciones van pasando. Entonces, esta es la tercera generación de músicos de San Jacinto de Milpas.
Gracias, everyone. We're really excited to be here. And the master, Edson, this is the band of music of the Casa de Cultura, Roberto Castillo. It's the cultural department in San Jacinto. So this is the third generation of music. So we are really happy to be here. The first time, for some of them, is the first time that they are taking on planes, so we are really, really happy.
Este, estamos formados aproximadamente con 25 niños, otros tenemos la oportunidad de venir únicamente 15 años, pero nos sentimos muy orgullosos de poder presentar a ustedes una música tradicional oaxaca.
They are in total 25 members of the music band, but now we couldn't, they couldn't, we couldn't count 25, but they are really happy to hear.
Somos una banda tradicional oaxaqueña, y esa es una pequeña, muy grande banda de lo que es la granja de Oaxaca, porque Oaxaca es el para su cultura de mi.
We are, well, this is the heart of the San Jacinto de Milpas, because Oaxaca, my gosh, has a lot of traditions, music, food, my gosh, but this is like a small piece of San Jacinto de Milpas.
Este, pues nuevamente nos sentimos agradecidos por estar aquí, que nos den la oportunidad de tocar en este recinto, porque no todos los días estamos aquí. La verdad es que estamos aprovechando el momento. Nos sentimos muy, muy agradecidos, y pues muchas gracias.
We are really grateful to be here. Not every day, we have the opportunity to perform in front of a cabildo, so we are really happy and thank you all.
Lou speaks a number of languages, including Japanese, all right, and French, and Spanish, and English. So anyway, I am just going to make the presentation of the proclamation. Esta proclamación es para ustedes, luego le podrán dar lectura. Es un reconocimiento de parte de todos los miembros del cabildo aquí en la ciudad escondido, haciéndoles una proclamación a ustedes por haber venido, ser parte de las ciudades hermanas aquí en, con nosotros en escondido. So it's a proclamation to recognize that they are part of, y ahorita nos vamos a tomar una foto como grupo, este, of our Sister Cities Initiative, and we're very excited and thankful that they took time to come out and support Kalislan Dance Group. So I'd love to have my colleagues come up and let's take a picture all together. Vamos a tomarnos una foto todos juntos con los miembros del cabildo. Zach can direct us.
Yeah, I know you got it. Maybe the council can kind of integrate in, so that way they're, I haven't made too much of the, you can go first, please. We're going to be flexible here, Councilmember Garcia. All right. So we're going to do this thing first, everyone, this camera right here. All right. One more right here. One, two, three. One, two, three. Wonderful. Thank you so much. Congratulations.
And we'll give our friends a few moments to get collected with their musical instruments, and they can depart, and then we'll carry on with the rest of the meeting.
I didn't know that Zach spoke Spanish. And they've been up, or we've been up, because we had a presentation on the news this morning. We had to be there at 6:00, so we're tired.
Okay, next up is Fire Prevention Week. I would invite anybody from fire or whoever else to come down and join me. Don't all jump up at once. Oh, perfect. All right. Fire Prevention Week, whereas the city of Escondido is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those who live, work, and visit our community, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greater risk from fire, and whereas the National Fire Prevention Association has sponsored Fire Prevention Week since 1922, making it the longest-running public health observance in the United States, and whereas the Escondido Fire Department is dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and the injuries they cause through prevention, education, and emergency response, and whereas Escondido residents are encouraged to plan and practice a home fire escape plan, check smoke alarms monthly, and ensure all members of the household understand what to do in the event of a fire. Now therefore, I, Dana M. White, Mayor of the city of Escondido, do hereby proclaim the week of October 5th through October 11th, 2025, as Fire Prevention Week in the city of Escondido, and I urge all residents to actively participate in fire prevention efforts at home, at work, and in our schools, and to support the life-saving work of our fire service professionals.
Well, it's a night of proclamations. I'm not sure how I'm supposed to follow that, so, anyway. Thank you, Mayor and City Council members. This week's, this year's Fire Prevention Week campaign titled "Charge Into Fire Safety: Lithium-Ion Batteries in Your Home" highlights how important it is to buy, charge, and recycle lithium-ion batteries safely. Most of the electronics we use in our homes on a daily basis are powered by lithium-ion batteries, cell phones, laptops, lawn tools, power tools, toys, just to name a few. If they're not used correctly, or if they're damaged, lithium-ion batteries can overheat, start a fire, and even explode. So this year's Fire Prevention Week campaign helps us to understand how important it is to use these batteries correctly to avoid fires in our homes, and the importance of following the buy, charge, and recycle safely approach. We want to buy only listed products, so look for devices that have a stamp from a nationally-recognized testing laboratory, such as Underwriters Laboratory. Charge safely by using only the cord that comes with your device. Charge on a hard, flat surface. Never anything soft, like a bed or a couch. None of us ever do that. And when your device is fully charged, unplug it. We don't want to overcharge it. And recycle responsibly. Don't ever throw lithium-ion batteries in the trash or regular recycle bin because they can start a fire. If you visit cultrerecycle.org, you can find a safe recycling facility. Even though we implement these safety practices, fires can still happen, so it's very important that you have an escape plan of your own, so you and your family can get out of your home quickly and safely in the event of a fire or other emergency. We recently teamed up with some local schools and held a, it's actually our fourth year doing this, for our third graders. It's a home fire escape plan contest, and the students were asked to draw the layout of their home, and to show us their escape plan, which is two ways out of every room, where their smoke alarms are in their home, and their outside meeting place. So at this time, I would like to invite the students that showed up tonight to come to the front. I know Maya's here, and we have, oh, good, I got you. Hi, buddy. On behalf of Escondido Fire, I would like to acknowledge these students for their hard work and for recognizing the importance of an escape plan. Thank you for being here. And the Escondido Fire Department urges all of our residents to please make sure your homes have working smoke alarms to increase your safety and protect your lives, and when it comes to lithium-ion batteries, please practice the buy, charge, and recycle safely approach. Thank you.
Don't go anywhere yet. We need a picture.
We need a picture.
Yes. Most important.
Very good.
Add one more for the official record. That's okay. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three. Congratulations.
Next up is Manufacturing Month, and I would like to invite, I'm assuming Economic Development and ACT and Paradigm Dental. Hello. All right. This one is lengthy, lengthy, so bear with me. Whereas manufacturing plays a vital role in Escondido's economy by providing high-quality jobs, driving innovation, and producing goods that serve local, regional, and global markets, and whereas California has the largest number of manufacturers in the nation, representing virtually all manufacturing sectors and contributing significantly to the state's economic growth and workforce development, and whereas Escondido is home to a thriving and diverse manufacturing community, including companies such as ACT and Paradigm Dental Models, who exemplify the creativity and resilience of this industry, and whereas ACT and Paradigm Dental Models, headquartered in Escondido nearly five decades and employing 77 local team members, provides dental professionals worldwide with a wide range of high-quality custom dental models, molds, and related supplies, serving general practitioners, specialists, implant companies, universities, and laboratories, and is complemented by a full-service dental laboratory and prototyping shop that supports dental education, product demonstration, and innovation in the field. And whereas Manufacturing Month celebrates the importance of modern manufacturing and raises awareness of the highly skilled careers and innovations driving this sector, and whereas the city of Escondido proudly recognizes the contributions of its manufacturers for strengthening the local economy, advancing technology, and investing in our community's workforce. Now therefore, I, Dana White, Mayor of the city of Escondido, do hereby proclaim October 2025 as Manufacturing Month in the city of Escondido, and extend its gratitude to ACD Paradigm Dental Models and all local manufacturers for their dedication, innovation, and impact on our community and beyond.
Yeah, I don't know how you followed that up. That's pretty, that was well-written, and I guess just basically just want to say thank you for, I guess, just the recognition, and, and it's something I can take back to the facility and, and just, you know, really something to be proud of and, and stuff. So just honored and blessed to be part of such a great community, and so thank you very much.
Yeah. All right. Code Compliance Month. And while they come down here, I want to say something. Code compliance is one of those jobs that's probably pretty thankless, but without the city, we'd be city, we'd be in a lot worse shape, so thank you for all that you guys do. You're welcome to join me up here. Code Compliance Month for October, whereas the health, safety, and welfare of all Escondido residents is a top priority of the City of Escondido, and whereas the city's Code Compliance Division plays a vital role in maintaining and enhancing the quality of life in our community by ensuring that local ordinances and regulations are followed, protecting property values, and supporting a clean, safe, and vibrant environment for all, and whereas Code Compliance Officers are dedicated public servants who work diligently and often behind the scenes to educate residents, resolve violations, address neighborhood concerns, and foster voluntary compliance through collaboration, communication, and consistency, and whereas the work of Code Compliance Officers supports a wide range of community priorities, including public health, environmental stewardship, neighborhood revitalization, and public safety, and whereas October is designated as National Code Compliance Month, providing an opportunity to raise awareness of the critical work performed by Code Compliance Professionals and to recognize their service, professionalism, and commitment to the community, and whereas the City of Escondido is proud to honor its Code Compliance Team for their dedication to building a better Escondido for all residents, businesses, and visitors. Now therefore, I Dane White, Mayor of the City of Escondido, on behalf of the City Council and residents of our great city, do hereby proclaim October 2025 as Code Compliance Month in the City of Escondido, and encourage all community members to support and appreciate the important work of Code Compliance Professionals in maintaining the high standards that make Escondido a place where we are proud to call home. Thank you.
Thank you, Eli. I appreciate you.
Thank you. I'm gonna be brief. My team prepared a speech for me, and I wasn't gonna speak, but this team is awesome, and I'm actually not gonna go by the script. They have a thankless job, cleaning the city, supporting the city, upholding the general plan of a safe, clean city. I'd just like to say thank you, staff, for supporting the city, keeping it clean, and supporting me as your leader with my visions, with your support. I just want to say thank you and recognizing this awesome team.
Okay. Congratulations. So we need a picture real quick, you guys. Here we go. Okay. One, two, three, one, two, three, one, two, three. Give up for the amazing Code Compliance Team. Yeah. Oh, I thought somebody, I thought somebody like wanted to do it. No, no, no. Okay. Cool. Okay, could I have Pastor Agner Madrono come join me at the front, please? On behalf of the City Council, the Code Compliance Division, and the Office of the Mayor, the City of Escondido proudly recognizes and commends Pastor Agnes Madrono for his outstanding dedication and meaningful contributions to our community. This recognition is given in sincere appreciation for Pastor Madrono's exceptional partnership with the city's Code Compliance Division in the ongoing effort to restore and revitalize blighted properties and neglected lots throughout Escondido. His tireless work has played a vital role in enhancing the beauty, safety, and livability of our neighborhoods. Beyond his collaborative efforts, Pastor Madrono has served as a steadfast pillar of hope and leadership in communities historically impacted by crime and urban blight. His unwavering commitment to uplifting others and fostering positive change embodies the very essence of community service. And before I finish this, this is a certificate of recognition, but I'm actually changing it to a proclamation, and so I am declaring today, October 15th, Pastor Agner Madrono Day in the City of Escondido.
Thank you. You want to say anything? Yeah, go ahead. It's all yours.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Well, make sure you put that in the calendar, please. I just wanted to say, I'm just grateful. I love my city, you know, and I always think, how can I help to make a difference? At one time, I was part of the problem. Now I want to be a part of the solution. And I partnered up with code enforcement because I said, I don't want them to find me. I better make them my friends, you know? And, you know, we work together, helping individuals in our community. I'm grateful for Compact that allows me to work and partner up with different agencies, with the police department, the city. I just love my city, and I just want to make a better place for my children. And if I could do one thing, you know, might be small, might be big, it doesn't matter, and I just, I'm honored to take this and, you know, just to have this and be recognized, I really appreciate that. And my brother right here got me a wee whacker, so I just want to say thank you. But I just want to say thank you to everybody, and we're family, and we're a beautiful community. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. And make sure you put that in the calendar, okay? Everybody know.
One, two, three, one, two, three, one, two, three. All right, here we go. One, two, three, one, two, three, one, two, three. All right, on to the boring stuff. Tonight, there is no report out of closed session, so we'll go to non-agenda public comments.
Yes, Courtney Cabral.
Hello? Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and City Council members. As President of the Escondido History Center, I'm coming to you for support in preserving two historic landmarks located within Grape Day Park: the exterior of the 1890s Victorian house and the train car. These structures are not only vital to the Escondido heritage, but are also situated close to the City Hall Building, serving as daily reminders of our community's rich past. Preserving these landmarks will ensure that future generations can continue to learn and appreciate Escondido's unique history. We hope that the city will consider allocating resources or assistance to help protect and restore these irreplaceable assets. Thank you all.
Our next.
Honorable civil servants, I speak to you today to offer my time to research any issue which may give you reservation regarding our expected small lift initiative to advancement of retail cannabis sales in our city. I have spoken previously to this august body regarding my winning faith in my local government, as well as my observation recently during our Proposition 50 council vote, that I was unable to identify any council member who appeared to have read Proposition 50, appearing to me to have voted having previously done little to no homework. I well understand each of you guys and women have very significant time constraints. Thus my offer, I present an opportunity for someone to do your homework for you. As a retired 25-year science industry professional, I will provide source documentation, only scientifically validated data, cite any issue not clear to date, note that, note those common opinions which may be considered anecdotal, and include my conclusion, my conclusion, of your current reservation for your consideration. As a decades-long city cannabis activist and former board of directors member of the San Diego chapter of Americans for Safe Access, I maintain contact with additional professional advisors if you may request. I will be disappointed if I get less than five information requests. I have produced one to date such report and delivered it to the petitioner. Please let me know if I can assist your informed decision-making. Lastly, Councilmember Fitzgerald, I am having difficulty in compiling crime data associated with cannabis retail outlets. Any guidance you may provide is appreciated. With respect, thank you.
No further non-agenda comments.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. We'll move on to the consent calendar, and before we move it, I do have a question. We received a public comment online about Item 11 with the purchase of 19 Ford Police Interceptor utility vehicles, and the question was something to the effect of, why are some fully loaded and others not?
We do have Joe Galarde who can answer that question. Prior to vote, if you'd like.
Yeah, Mayor, I could help you out with that question. So I'm, for the record, I'm Joe Galarde, your Director of Public Works. So as each vehicles are built, there's different specifications for each vehicle. So with this build of the 19, 13 specifications are Patrol, five are Sergeant, and one is a K-9 vehicle. So each vehicle type is built differently from the factory, so I think that's what you're seeing. We also have Lieutenant vehicles, we have Command vehicles, we have Chief vehicles, and all of them are ordered differently because we outfit them differently.
Makes sense. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Not a problem.
Items 1 through 12 are on consent tonight. I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
And then, Mr. Mayor, we have one member of the public who wants to pull Item Number 6 for discussion.
Sorry about that.
Item Number 6 is the Authorization of Contracts.
Then we will move Items 1 through 5 and 7 through 12, and I would ask for a second.
Second.
Perfect.
Voting is open. Motion approved, 5-0.
Okay. There's a member of the public who would like to speak on Item 6?
Yes, Ms. Rodriguez.
So, good evening, everyone, Mayor, Council members, community members. My name is Marjana Rodriguez. I work at Escondido Education Compact, and I'm honored to speak on behalf of Patty Huerta, our Executive Director, who can be here today. And I just want to say, I've been here over the years, and I've seen her come up to this very podium and champion a cause, never for recognition, never for recognition, never to elevate Compact per se, but really to be a voice of advocacy, and for our community, for the services that really could help elevate the lives of the residents of this community. So today, item number 6 is the Rental Assistance and Utility Assistance Program, and so I just want to thank you for having this item and considering this item, and hopefully consenting to this item. I think it's going to be vital to continuing our work in our community. So I'm joined by members of our Compact team, also joined by our board, members of our board who like unite their voices to the echo of Patty's legacy, which is one of compassion, service, and unwavering commitment, and so we thank you for the partnership. We thank you that you guys have our residents' best interest in mind. Right now, these are hard times, economic hard times, and so we really think that these funds are going to be vital, like getting these funds into their hands is going to be vital for their success and the success of their children. So I just wanted to thank you.
Thank you. With that, with that, I will enthusiastically move to approve Item 6 and ask for a second. Perfect. Motion second. Any other questions or comments? Okay, please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
That takes us on to Item Number 12. No, current business. Item 13, Home Investment Partnership Program Update. And the time is yours. Thank you.
My name is Danielle Lopez.
I think your microphones might be muted, Danielle, sorry.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name's Danielle Lopez. I'm the Housing and Neighborhood Services Manager. With me is Norma O'Keen, Management Analyst overseeing our Home Investment Partnership or HOME program. Tonight, we will be providing an overview on our HOME program for you. Today's agenda will include what the HOME program is, eligible versus non-eligible expenses, home ARP funding, which is just another type of home funding that we have, our project history over the last five years, funding and current home programs and projects, opportunities that the council has currently, and then substantial amendments and the new timeline for our HOME and CDBG programs. So today, we'll provide an overview of the HOME program and request the City Council receive this update and affirm current priorities or provide guidance on program changes. So now I'll turn it over to Norma to go over the programs with you.
Good afternoon, Council. My name is Norma O'Keen. I'm the Home Management Analyst for Housing and Neighborhood Services. The HOME Investment Partnership Program, or simply HOME, is HUD's largest block grant dedicated to creating affordable housing. HUD allocates HOME funds to states and local governments by formula each year. The purpose is to strengthen partnerships between government and nonprofit or private developers so communities can expand the supply of safe, decent, and affordable housing. The program is especially focused on serving very low-income families and individuals. HOME funds are restricted to four main categories, as you can see in this slide. The first is rental housing. HOME is commonly used here for acquiring land or property, building new affordable housing, or rehabilitating existing rental units. Second, we have homeowners rehabilitation. These funds can be used to repair or rehabilitate owner-occupied homes, often for families who otherwise wouldn't afford the work. Third, we have Tenant-Based Rental Assistance, or TIBRA. This program looks similar to the Section 8 vouchers, but it's locally controlled and provides direct rental assistance to income-eligible households. And lastly, we have Home Buyer Activities. This includes assistance like down payments, closing costs, or development of homes that will be sold to income-eligible buyers. In addition, HUD requires two set-asides. One is for administrative costs, which are capped at 10%. The other is the CHODO set-aside. At least 15% of our annual home allocation must go to certified community housing development organizations such as Habitat for Humanity or Community Housing Works. These categories and requirements keep HOME funds focused on their purpose: creating, preserving, and supporting affordable housing in our community. HUD does set rules on what HOME funds cannot be used for. On this slide, you'll see a list of ineligible expenses, but I'll just go ahead and read a few. HOME cannot pay for everyday bills like operating costs. Home cannot pay for everyday bills like operating cost or utilities. It cannot be used to replace the federal Section 8 voucher program. It cannot be used to meet matching requirements for other federal programs. The important point is to remember this. HUD provides a specific list of eligible activities. If a project or expense is not on that list, then it's not eligible. It is not wise to try, wise to try and make something fit if HUD has not already approved it. HUD sets these rules to make sure funds are used for eligible housing activities. In the next few slides, we'll be walking through several specific questions we've received about the use of home funds. The first question is, can home funds go into a housing trust fund? The answer is no. Under federal regulations, specifically 24 CFR Part 92, home funds must be committed to very specific eligible housing activities. These include acquisition of housing property, rehabilitation of homes, new construction of non-luxury housing, tenant-based rental assistance, and activities carried out by certified community housing development organizations, or CHODOs. A housing trust fund is not on one of the eligible activities. Sections 92.214 of the regulation lists prohibited uses of the home funds. While it doesn't capture every possible misuse, it clearly states that home dollars cannot be deposited into a general housing trust fund. HUD has reinforced this repeatedly in rulemaking and guidance. The reason is that Home is an activity-based program, meaning every dollar must go directly into a specific HUD-approved projects or programs, not into broader accounts or flexible funding sources. This distinction is critical. If Council wants to support a housing trust fund for broader purposes, that funding must come from local dollars or other non-home federal or state sources. Home dollars cannot be used in that way. Now, moving on, another important question we often receive is whether home funds can be used for shelter operations. Again, the answer is no. Under HUD regulations, specifically 24 CFR 92.205, Home is designed for permanent housing, not for emergency shelters or temporary crisis programs. This means Home cannot pay for beds that do not have a lease or occupancy agreement. It cannot cover meals, staffing, or crisis services in a shelter setting. Shelters operate on a nightly or short-term basis and do not provide tenancy rights or exclusive use of unit by household, which is required under Home. The important point is that Home must always be tied to permanent housing outcomes. While shelters play a vital role in a safety net, they are not considered permanent housing under HUD's definition. While home funds cannot be used for shelter or temporary crisis programs, a third question we often receive is whether they can be used to create long-term supportive housing, or what HUD calls permanent supportive housing, or PSH, and the answer is yes, when certain conditions are met. PSH combines affordable housing with voluntary supportive services. Please note that PSH must follow HUD's Housing First model. That means people do not need to meet preconditions like sobriety or mandatory services participating before moving in. The focus is to provide a stable home first and then connect residents to services that help them stay housed long-term. Under HUD rules, every resident must have a lease or rental agreement, just like any other renter. These homes are designed for people who face the most significant barriers to housing, such as chronic homelessness, serious mental or physical conditions, substance use disorders, or a history of incarceration. Home funds only can pay for the housing portion, which includes construction, rehabilitation, or rental assistance. The supportive services like case management, counseling, or medical care pay, are paid for through other programs and funding sources. This model helps reduce homelessness and gives long-term stability to people with complex housing needs. Now, this slide here explains what HUD means when it defines long-term supportive housing as permanent housing. As mentioned in the previous slide, PSH must be constructed the same way as any other rental housing when home funds are used with every resident having a lease or occupancy agreement. Additionally, each household must have its own private lockable space. Dormitory style or shared bed setups are not allowed. Residents also have the same tenancy rights as any other renter. That includes fair housing protections and due process for evictions, ensuring that everyone is treated equally and lawfully. On the compliance side, the city has ongoing responsibilities. We are required to monitor for signed leases for all home-assisted units, monitor rent limits, verify income eligibility, and make sure leases and all obligations remain in full compliance throughout the affordability period. The city's affordable housing projects report this through a third-party software system called Focus. If HUD determines that a project is out of compliance or that home funds were used for an ineligible activity, the city may be required to repay those funds, even if it's years later. That is why strong monitoring after funding and careful review before funding any project are both essential. Now, another question we receive often is whether home funds can be used for housing rehabilitation, and the answer is yes, as long as the work brings the entire property into compliance with HUD's property standards. Examples of eligible rehabilitation projects include repairing or replacing major building systems such as roofs, plumbing, and electrical, correcting health and safety issues like lead-based paint, or structural hazards, adding accessibility improvements for senior or persons with disabilities, or rebuilding a home on the same site when repairing the existing structure would be more expensive and still fail to meet current building and safety standards. While rehabilitation is in eligible use under Home, many cities no longer use it because of its high compliance cost. Every project must be brought up to the, to the current property code, not just the portion that's being repaired, and must meet housing quality standards, accessibility, and energy requirements. This makes projects expensive and more complex to administer. To better understand how other jurisdictions are managing these programs, we reached out to our neighboring cities. Elka Home continues to operate a home loan program, while San Marcos now only monitors older home loans. That is why Escondido, like most jurisdictions, focuses its home funds on rental housing development, tenant-based rental assistance, and homebuyer programs, which support HUD's goal of expanding and preserving affordable housing. Now that we've reviewed a few key points about our regular Home program, I want to shift into a different but related funding source called Home ARP. It is important to note that Home ARP should not be confused with the regular Home program. Although they are connected, Home ARP was created separately under the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 as one, as a one-time allocation made in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. It follows its own rules and focuses on helping specific vulnerable populations who are experiencing or at risk of homelessness. There are important differences between the regular Home program and Home ARP. Under Home ARP, funds must primarily benefit qualifying individuals and families who fall into very specific categories. These include individuals and families experiencing homelessness or at imminent risk of homelessness, survivors of domestic violence, dating violence, sexual assault, stalking, or trafficking, and another, and other vulnerable populations such as those facing severe housing instability or at high risk of becoming homeless. Uses for Home ARP funds are somewhat broader than the regular Home program. Funds may be used for construction of rental housing, including manufactured housing, single-room occupancy or SRO units, and permanent supportive housing. Tenant-based rental assistance, which functions similarly to housing vouchers but is administered under Home rules. Supportive services that directly connect to housing stability such as case management, acquisition and development of non-congregate shelters, meaning private units like hotel conversions, not dormitory-style shelters. The main point for Council is that Home ARP is a targeted funding source focused exclusively on these qualifying populations and uses. Every project we approve must be tied to those group, and compliance is closely monitored by HUD. HUD gave cities Home ARP funds with very specific rules, and those rules tell us exactly what is and is not allowed. Home ARP allows what HUD calls non-congregate shelters. That means private rooms or units that can be used as temporary shelter. This is very different from the traditional dormitory-style shelters that most people are familiar with. Instead of shared spaces, these are separate rooms, often created through the construction of new units or by acquiring and repurposing buildings like motels or nursing homes for temporary housing use. There are no long-term leases or rental agreements required for entry, but it is important to understand that these units must only serve the qualifying population that HUD has defined. It is also important to explain what Home ARP cannot do. These funds cannot be used to pay ongoing shelter operations such as meals, staffing, or pricing services. Home ARP is specifically focused on expanding housing resources by building, acquiring, or rehabilitating units, not by covering day-to-day operating costs. Now, we're going to go into some project history, specifically into the last five years. In the last five years, we have released two successful housing development RFPs. Our housing solicitations have focused on two of the four eligible Home activities. Those include rental housing and homebuyer's assistance. Each request for proposal is structured to create long-term affordable housing opportunities through qualified developers, including nonprofit organizations, for-profit corporations, and certified community development organizations. The first of these two solicitations was released on March 21, 2019. That RFP was funded with federal home funds and focused on supporting affordable housing development and first-time homebuyer's opportunities. Through that process, the city awarded $1 million in home funds to San Diego Habitat for Humanity for what became the El Norte Home Project, that's located at 245 East El Norte Parkway. The project created 10 new affordable for-sale homes, each supported with $100,000 in home assistance. That assistance helped reduce the purchase price and made the homes attainable for low-income first-time homebuyers. The El Norte project was designed to expand homeownership opportunities to working families in Escondido, while also meeting HUD's long-term affordability and compliance requirements. All 10 homes were completed and sold to qualified buyers, and the affordability restrictions continue to remain in place through the recorded Home Regulatory Agreement. Following that success, the city issued another solicitation on March 26, 2020, that RFP was funded with successor housing agency funds, and continued the city's efforts to support affordable rental housing and first-time homebuyer opportunities. Through this process, the city awarded $4 million to National Corps for the development of Valley Senior Village, located at 337 East Valley Parkway. Valley Senior Village is a 50-unit affordable senior community serving residents aged 62 and older. 25 units were designated as permanent supportive housing for formerly homeless seniors, and the remaining 25 units provided deeply affordable rental housing for other lower-income seniors in our community. Together, these two projects illustrate how the city has strategically leveraged both federal home funds and local successor housing agency funds to expand affordable housing opportunities, support homeownership, and provide a long-term housing stability for vulnerable residents, and reflect the city's continued commitment to align local investments with state and federal housing priorities while ensuring long-term compliance and affordability. Now, here's Danielle to talk about funding.
Okay, so this side, this slide shows the current balances of our Home and our Home ARP funding. So we have approximately $4.5 million available in Home funds. This balance includes the 15% of funding that is required to be set aside for community housing development organizations such as Habitat or Community Housing Works. We also have approximately $2 million available in Home ARP funding. For the regular Home program, funds must be spent within nine years of being awarded, and any funds that are not spent in that timeframe can be recaptured by HUD. For Home ARP, the rule is a little bit different. Those funds have a one-time hard deadline of September 30, 2030. Again, if the funds are not fully spent by that date, HUD can take back the remaining So this slide shows a breakdown of our Home funds by fiscal year after pulling out the 15% required set aside. So the 4.4 million drops down to approximately 3.8. The bottom line is obviously the same, but these funds that are here can be used on any eligible Home activities. Each line shows the amount of funding we received for that year and the expiration date. So for example, the $348,000 received in fiscal year 2017, if not spent, will, will expire on September 30, 2026. Here we have the Home ARP funds. Again, these funds will expire on September 30, 2020. We do have plans for both of these funding sources that we will be getting into in the next few slides. So now we're going to talk about what we currently fund with these resources and what projects we have in the pipeline. This slide shows one of our two ongoing programs that are currently funded with Home Resources. The Senior Rental Subsidy Program is a program currently, that currently provides monthly rental assistance to senior households. It's budgeted at $72,000 a year, which can support 30 seniors at $200 a month each. This flyer, which is our new marketing material, will be available on our website very soon. In 2025, the city expanded the program with additional home funding to assist 10 additional seniors, bringing the total from 20 to 30. We're just about ready to push out this material and social media content to get those additional spaces filled. Applications will be accepted on a first-come, first-served basis. The second program is the First-Time Homebuyer Program. Today, the city manages about 120 active home loans. Loan amounts range from $3,000 to $25,000 and can be used for down payment or closing cost assistance. In the last five years, the city has issued four first-time homebuyer loans. That includes one in 2024 and one so far in 2025. There are two main issues with this program that we've discussed before. First, to qualify, the Home must fall within HUD's current purchase price cap, which is $698,000 for San Diego County. And second, the $25,000 cap that the city has placed on its loan amount is very low. Housing prices have continued to rise, so this amount is really no longer sufficient to make homeownership affordable for income-eligible families. We have seen, as we have seen in the low number of applications that we've received. As Norma mentioned earlier, the city received a one-time allocation of $2.2 million under the American Rescue Plan. On March 22, 2023, the City Council approved Resolution 23-31, which formally adopted Escondido's Home ARP allocation plan and authorized its submittal to HUD. The allocation dedicates $1.5 million to create at least 15 new permanent affordable rental housing units. These units will be reserved for extremely low-income households at 0 to 30% AMI, with a preference for residents who are experiencing homelessness or at risk of losing housing. $423,000 is set aside to support direct services like security deposit assistance, tenant navigation, and case management. And finally, $339,000 is reserved for the administration of the program, which is capped at the maximum 15% that HUD allows. With that said, the Housing and Neighborhood Services Division intends to release an RFP for the development of affordable rental units and/or first-time home opportunities similar to the RFPs previously released. Council approved the release of this RFP for affordable housing development using Home and Home ARP funds on August 7, 2024 during the public hearing for the 2024-2025 Annual Action Plan. The total funding available under this RFP will be approximately $4.5 million, including the 1.5 in Home ARP funds. Allocating this amount ensures that we preserve, or I'm sorry, that we prevent the loss of expiring funds and maintain sufficient resources to continue to fund the other programs. We will prioritize proposals that serve low and very low-income households, demonstrate financial feasibility, and align with the city's housing element, climate action plan, and HUD program requirements. Each proposal will be evaluated for project readiness, long-term affordability, and the ability to meet both federal and local housing goals. So this slide highlights some opportunities the city has identified as we continue to evaluate our housing programs. The first opportunity is to expand our rental subsidy program. Right now, the program is funded to assist 30 seniors' households at $200 a month. This could be expanded by adding more funding, so increasing the subsidy per household, or by expanding the number of senior households served, or both. The second opportunity is to evaluate the first-time home buyer down payment assistance limit. Currently, the city provides up to $25,000 per household in home-funded assistance. However, housing prices have continued to rise, so this amount is really no longer sufficient to make homeownership attainable for income-eligible families. HUD does not set a maximum loan amount under the home program, but it does require that assistance be necessary and reasonable to achieve affordability. That gives the city flexibility to consider increasing that limit, which could be reflected in an update to the city's home program guidelines and annual action plan. Finally, there's an opportunity to expand the upcoming Home RFP to include an option for permanent supportive housing. This would allow developers to submit proposals that include units for residents who need long-term services and supports those existing, those exiting homelessness or living with disabilities. On this slide, we take a little bit of a deeper dive into what increasing the rental subsidy program could look like. So these are just a couple of examples, and we're happy to look at any scenarios that you would like us to. In the first example, we increased the households by 10, which would increase our budget from $72,000 to $96,000. In the second episode, excuse me, in the second example, we increased the monthly subsidy by $100, which would increase our budget to $108,000. And then, in the third example, we do both. So we increase the households to 40, we increase the monthly allocation to 300, which brings our annual allocation to $144,000. I just want to point out that option number one can be done administratively, where the second and the third options will trigger a substantial amendment to our HUD action plan, and I'll explain what that means in just a minute. On this slide, we look at an example of raising the first-time home buyer loans from a maximum of $25,000 to a maximum of $50,000. Again, this is just an example. If you'd like us to look at other numbers, we're happy to do so. We looked, and average closing costs range from 2% to 5% of home sale, of the home sale price. So because HUD caps the sale price of a home assisted with this funding at $698,000, we took that figure, multiplied it by the 5%, and we came up with a closing cost amount of $34,900. With that said, we are recommending at least raising the limit to $50,000. Number one, because HUD has been raising the cap periodically over the last few years, so this would allow us flexibility into the future. And additionally, these funds can also be used for down payment assistance. They're not just simply for closing costs. So the amount of the loans could range from, you know, $0 to $50,000. So now we'll go over potential substantial amendments to our HUD action plans. So if the council chooses to make any changes to any of the existing allocations mentioned above, a substantial amendment may be triggered. Per the city's Citizen Participation Plan included and approved by council in the five-year consolidated plan, the city is required to amend its plan whenever it makes one of the following decisions. Number one, to carry out an activity not previously described in the plan. Number two, to substantially amend the purpose, scope, location, or beneficiary of an activity. And number three, to substantially amend the funding of a project. So what does substantially amending the funding mean? A substantial amendment is defined as a change that affects the funding level of more than $25,000 for projects budgeted at $100,000 or less, or greater than 25% for projects budgeted at over $100,000. So a substantial amendment must be authorized by the city council and must be re-submitted to HUD for approval. If a substantial amendment is triggered, the staff will return to council and follow the required process, including conducting a public hearing to introduce the potential amendment, drafting an amended plan, and providing a 30-day public review and comment period of that plan. Simultaneously, we'll conduct community outreach, soliciting public feedback on the suggested amendments, and then finally, conducting the second public hearing to approve the new plan and approve its submittal to HUD. Alternatively, the other option would be to wait until the next funding cycle and wrap the plan amendments into the annual action plan approval process. Which brings me to the final slide, the revised timeline for CDBG and home funding approval. So here we have a revised timeline for the CDBG and home process. The new timeline will allow for additional public input and allow more opportunity for council involvement. We've expanded the timeline quite a bit. We usually start this process in March or April, and we'll be pushing that back to start in January. It also provides more of an educational component. So we will be kicking off January with an overview of the CDBG and home program. We'll also look at accomplishments at that meeting, and we'll introduce our current priorities. In February, we'll hold our first public hearing to reaffirm or amend the priorities. We'll also look at the RFP process and determine if there's any priorities that the council would like us to focus on. In March, we'll release the RFP for three or four weeks. We'll accept those proposals and review them. April, we will meet with the council individually to review these proposals and discuss them. And then, May, we will conduct the 30-day public comment period after we have drafted the annual action plan and posted it on our website. And then finally, in June, we'll hold our second public hearing where we will adopt the action plan and get approval for submittal to HUD. That concludes our presentation, and we are open for questions.
Any public comments on this item?
None.
Okay. Can you go back to the slide that has the math? Yeah, okay. So the Senior Subsidy Program, do we normally have more than 30 applicants? Because we do 30 right now, right?
We do 30 right now. We have 20. We have space for 30. We are about to push out our marketing material, so I think we'll fill those pretty quickly. I mean, honestly, we haven't had many calls, but again, there hasn't really been a push.
I was gonna say, I think with some education, that would probably change. Okay. What about, same question for the down payment assistance? How many applicants did we have last time for that?
We had one in 2024 and one so far in 2025.
Really? That is shocking. So when we had the ribbon cutting for the 10 homes we did with Habitat for Humanity, did all 10 of those people, they didn't get down payment assistance?
They got down payment assistance through the RFP process. So that's this project.
Okay.
Where, oops, I'm sorry, went the wrong way. We awarded Habitat for Humanity $1 million, which got split evenly between the 10 households. So they each got $100,000 towards their essentially a down payment.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, that was pretty incredible to be there for that ribbon cutting. I would love to see us do something like that again and get people in homeownership. Would be my end goal. I guess all I'll say is, I would support, I'll support whatever the council decides, but it seems like increasing the amount of seniors receiving assistance, as well as increasing the amount, I would support that. It makes sense to me, but I'll open it up to my colleagues for discussion. Council member?
Yes, I am in agreement with the mayor exactly regarding adding more to the assistance, the rental subsidy program, and then also increasing the down payment. And as you pointed out, you know, the prices keep going up. So that 25 is just not moving anything, so I understand why people would not be applying, because they would still not be able to qualify. So I'm in agreement with increasing it to the 50. Good work. I know when we met, we had a lot of questions then. You just did a really good thorough job. I appreciate you both. Thank you for what you do.
Very quickly, this has been a subject that's been of importance to me for a number of years. Now, we've increased rental assistance, and that basically came from a lot of conversations I had with senior centers at our senior center, saying, you know, this is homeless prevention. So I would like to see that increase. I would support that. Down payment assistance, I've had many conversations with a lot of real estate agents, and a lot of the conversation was, they really didn't even know that there was something that Escondido provided. So I think with some education information out there and an increase, because it is a very small amount. Unfortunately, HUD does limit it and makes it very hard to be able to qualify. But I think that if we increase it on our end and we put out that information, there will be more opportunity to be able to support those that are applying for that. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you for the presentation. Very informative. Could we go to the opportunities or recommendations that provides the three? I think it's towards the end. I remember seeing three. There we go, opportunities. That's what it's called. Thank you. Yeah, so I wonder if we could do all three of these. I would love to do that. Definitely, the senior rental assistance, I believe, I guess it would, I don't know what the breakdown would be financially, but I would definitely want to increase that. I do think that once word gets out, you will get a lot of interest in that. So I would even be supportive of doubling that, including the first-time home buyer payment assistance. For years, we had no one apply, so the fact that we've had one each year is somewhat of an increase. So I definitely support increasing that to $50,000 as recommended. And then also, I just want to uplift that if there's an opportunity for us to meet with our federal lobbying firm to talk to HUD and see what we can do about ensuring that, you know, whatever formulas need to be adjusted to reflect the California housing prices. I don't know how that works, but I know that, I believe that's been a barrier to also how much we can give for that program. I would like to uplift that opportunity for us to engage our lobby firm to fix that. So yes, I echo my colleagues on supporting that. And again, for the seniors, I would love to double what we have now, including for double for first-time home buyer assistance, and seeing what's left for that to explore permanent supportive housing. That would be great if we could do all three. That's my comments for now. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. I do appreciate it. Let me go to the presentation. I'm gonna echo what everybody else has said. I think we do need to take care of our vulnerable citizens, and I think our seniors are some of the most vulnerable, so I would like to see an increase in that. When was the last time, that $25,000, when was that recommended? That amount, when was it first recommended?
I would have to go back and look. I can't answer that question. I can find out for you. I think it's been that dollar amount for, that was probably the original amount, is my guess.
2002? 1902, he says. Okay, I think that's about right. Okay, so my concern, so I, the cap was $680,000, more or less? Was that the cap?
$698.
$698, so $700,000. So if we're looking at $700,000, that would be, so an FHA loan, you could qualify for about 3%. And so even if you take that 3%, if you take that $700,000, 3%, we're looking at $21,000 in assistance. So that would take care of that. The other thing is, the market is cooling, and it's cooling pretty significantly. We've seen actually, I think prior month, maybe it was May or June, we saw just a small dip in San Diego market. So I do understand that the $50,000 would be used for, you know, other housing, closing costs, et cetera. But even at 3%, if we're looking at 3% $21,000, I don't know if that $50,000 is necessary, just because until it does increase, until the market does increase, if it does, well, it will, but when it does, I think that's when we should revisit it. Until then, I would still be in support. I understand how closing costs works, and it is very expensive. But I would probably recommend something a little bit more modest, maybe a $35,000. Because if we're looking at $680,000, closing costs would be probably around $12,000, $15,000. At 3%, in FHA, you're looking at $21,000. That $35,000 should cover the cost of an FHA, 3% down plus closing costs. So I would think $35,000 is a better number. Unless I have any colleagues that say otherwise, I want to push back. I understand. Just because I'd rather use that money for senior housing. If it's, you know, a zero sum, I'm not sure if anybody has any insight or background on that.
The only comment I would make in response to that is not everybody gets an FHA loan.
Sure. But I think conventional loans, you can still get at 3%. So that's just, so I guess that's my background or my insight. I would prefer $35,000. I think even at 3% FHA, or even conventional, I think you can still do at 3%. Plus the closing costs, I think, would still cover at $35,000. And then we could revisit that number afterward.
But assuming that there's an inventory of homes at the $698 range, $700,000 range, and that's just not out there right now.
No, but that's the cap, right? So it'd have to be below that anyway.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. So that number, the max would be 30, my sum is, right, and this is napkin math, right? $35,000, that's if you're hitting that $700,000 max. Everything else would be below that.
So what I'm hearing is, it sounds like we're all in agreement on increasing the total number of seniors served, increasing the amount for the seniors served. And on that one, I guess when it comes back, can we see the numbers on $35,000 and $50,000?
Yeah, that's exactly what I was going to say. So these changes will trigger a substantial amendment, so we'll be bringing this back, and we can bring back specific numbers and scenarios and show you how that all plays out.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. And that's it for me. Thank you guys for your work.
Just a quick question on the substantial amendment. That just means we have to have a hearing again and just vote again on the changes, right?
Exactly. So the same process that we go through with the action plan or the consolidated plan, two hearings.
It's still gonna have to go back to HUD for approval.
That's correct.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
Getting us, putting us at the point where we're going to be in a hurry to make sure that we spend the funds?
No, this should, this should.
We should be okay.
Yes.
All right.
Just to follow up to that real quick, does the money have to be spent by that date or just committed to something by that date?
It needs to be spent and drawn down from IDIS, which is their accounting system.
We can do that?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
And just something to consider, because you're saying 35, that's only a $10,000 difference, and I don't know how much of an impact that's gonna make. So just something to think about.
Well, we'll get both numbers, and we can debate it then. Any other questions or comments? This doesn't require any action, does it?
No vote required.
No, we've received the guidance that we need.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much. We're gonna take a five-minute break before we move on to the next presentation. All right, we're gonna go ahead and reconvene the meeting for tonight. We are on Item 14, which is a staff presentation on Assembly Bill AB 130 and Senate Bill 131. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. My name's Veronica Maronis, and I'm our city planner. And with me here this evening to present on the new Assembly Bill 130 and Senate Bill 131 presentation is our new principal planner of our long-range section in the Planning Division, Sally Schiffman. So I'd like to welcome her to our council this evening. She'll be presenting on this item. You may recall Sally. You may recall Sally. She may look familiar because she was on the other side of our counter for many years as an applicant representing project proponents here in the city for development. So she is, she's now on this side of the counter, working with us on long-range projects. So I will let her introduce herself and hand it over to her.
Thank you, Veronica. Good evening, council. I'm going to dive right in. I know we've already had quite a long meeting so far. We're going to go ahead, I'll start with a brief introduction of what these two bills are. And then I'm going to dive into AB 130 and go over some high-level, most important aspects of the bill. Then I'll talk about SB 131 and we'll close out with what these mean for the city. So AB 130 and SB 131 are companion bills, sister bills, if you will. They were signed by the governor on June 30th of this year and they went into effect immediately. The intention of these bills is to further address the housing crisis here in the state. And it really focused in on streamlining the process timelines and trying to find ways to reduce hurdles to housing. So we'll start with AB 130. It was an omnibus bill. It affected approximately 60 different sections across six different codes. Many of the items were revisions, deletions, minor editorial changes. They were non-consequential, you know, aligning cross-code references and the like. However, some of the changes were more meaningful and amended environmental review laws, housing approval processes, building codes, HOA enforcement, surplus lands. And because of the broad scope of this bill, it of course impacts us here at the city and how we process projects. But it's impacting local developers. It impacts our homeowners, renters, and even our school district. So how do we navigate such an extensive bill? We wanted to distill this down to the items that most, most directly impact our work in development services and for you as decision makers. We're going to start with the two most impactful topic areas. This has to do with housing project streamlining and SEQA reforms. And then we're going to talk about items that may result in updates to our zoning code. And then of course, just to give you a general idea of what this is in case you need to field any questions from the public. As you're well aware, in recent years, California has passed many different rules and regulations related to housing. And many of these laws had temporary measures put in place that were set to expire in either 2029 or 2030. And AB 130 has taken many of those items and codified them to be placed in perpetuity. So expiration dates have been removed. This has to do with measures such as project review timelines, limitations on the application materials, limitations on the number of hearings that a project can go through, how exhaustive our comment letters need to be when projects come through, and the like. So you may already have heard a little bit about this, maybe seen a webinar or two come across your desk. A big piece of AB 130 was creating a new statutory exemption under the California Environmental Quality Act. There is a whole slew of criteria that a project must meet in order to be eligible for this exemption. And I'm going to go through those for you tonight. So first and foremost, it needs to be an infill housing development. It cannot include any hotel or motel component. It needs to be all housing. It does not have to have an affordability aspect. The project site can be up to 20 acres in size. This is a significant increase from an existing exemption for, that limits sites to five acres. So this is quite large. For builders remedy, this actually, they just also passed this last week. The governor signed a cleanup bill. This is now back to four acres, not five. Does not apply to the city of Escondido. The site needs to be in the incorporated city or a census-defined urban area. That is everything that we handle here in the city of Escondido. The site needs to have been previously developed as an urban use or be substantially surrounded by an urban use. The definition of urban use is pretty loose. It's any previous housing, previous commercial, public institutional, transit facility, et cetera. The site, or the project, needs to be consistent with the general plan and the zoning code with the caveat that if our land use designations do not match up, then the project would only have to meet the criteria of one of those codes. The density, state stipulates that the density has to be at least 50% of our so-called Mullen density for the city of Escondido. That would be greater than or equal to 15 units per acre. The site cannot have any of these criteria in existence. So government code 65913.4 has to do with the Housing Crisis Act from a few years back. So this, this list of criteria is the same as what we were already seeing in other projects. It just now applies to any of these larger housing projects that don't have affordability components. There are a couple of caveats here with fire hazards, earthquake, and flood. If the project may be impacted or impact one of those topic areas, but in its design is mitigating for those impacts, it still will qualify for this. So for example, if the site is within a very high fire hazard zone and they incorporate adopted local fire mitigation measures, they're back in compliance. Or if the site is going to be impacted by a flood zone and they choose to process a FEMA revision map or a NRI certification, they're back in compliance with this regulation. Regarding historic preservation, if the project is going to be impacting or result in the demolition of an existing historic structure, that structure would have to have already been on a local, state, or national register at the time that the project is submitted for review. So in the past, we've looked at projects to determine whether or not an existing structure is historic. We would now have to see proof of that right up front. Finally, we have requirements related to hazards, air quality, and prevailing wage. Applicants for this exemption would have to submit a Phase 1 site assessment up front to determine if there's any hazardous materials on the project site. For housing projects that are within 500 feet of a freeway, they would be required to put in centralized HVAC systems with MERV 16 filters. Right now, code requires MERV 13, so this does increase that. And then none of the balconies in the project would be permitted to face the freeway. And then for prevailing wage, it would come into play for any projects that are 100% affordable projects or if the building was going to exceed 85 feet regardless of the affordability component. So if a project, a housing project meets all of these criteria, it would then be eligible for the statutory exemption under SEQA. Tribal consultation is still required, but there are tightened-up timelines now associated under AB 130. So basically, we, the city, must initiate notification to interested tribes within 14 days of staff determining that their application is complete. At that point, the tribe has up to 60 days to respond and request consultation. If or when that occurs, we then have to begin that process within 14 days. And it will last a maximum of 45 days with a one-time 15-day extension. If no response is received from a tribe, consultation opportunities close within, at 60 days. At that time, whether we've closed consultation or no consultation occurred, we would then have to have that project come before a decision-making body within 30 days. So it really changes the timeline. Staff will be examining this and making sure that that is put into our internal process. Another important thing is that the law has now specified conditions of approval and/or mitigation measures related to tribal cultural resources. Those conditions must be incorporated into all projects and can only be removed or revised under consultation with tribes. So if no tribes consult, we will have those conditions on the project. And if consultation does occur, they would only be different if the tribe has agreed to that. Another big change under AB 130 has to do with the state's transit-oriented development implementation program. This is a program that is already in existence and it is overseen by the Department of Housing and Community Development. AB 130 establishes an in-lu contribution fee that would go towards the TOD implementation fund as mitigation for projects that have significant impacts related to vehicle miles traveled. The state is, has been told to provide guidance to cities by July 1st of next year. So we will be definitely on the lookout for that. We do not know exactly how this is going to play out yet. But we do know that those fees would be collected locally, or I'm sorry, the fees would be collected and held at the state level. And then those would be allocated back out at the local level through loans and grants. Funding priorities would be based on location, followed by percentage of affordability, followed by any need for gap funding, and then finally based on project readiness. And this could be for projects either related to affordable housing or for related infrastructure. Okay. Other aspects of AB 130, it did make adjustments to the Affordable Housing on Faith and Higher Education Lands Act, also known as SB 4. There is a new reporting requirement for our housing element annual reporting. It also specifies that childcare centers, regardless of the number of children they may support, would be allowed by right in association with housing on these lands. It also modifies the height allowances. By exceeding height, another one-story or 11 feet above the underlying zoning allowances. And it has modified parking requirements to specify that jurisdictions cannot impose parking greater than one space per unit for housing on these lands. Building code changes. This is a more important one for other jurisdictions. The city of Escondido does not include any reach codes in our building standards. We do simply follow the state building codes that come out. But the state now specifies that no new building standards will be implemented between now, this has already gone into effect, and June of 2031 unless those changes are related to health and safety. So for instance, home hardening codes. So the hope here is that there are fewer surprises or changes for developers during their building permit process. We will see how this plays out. In addition, a new code has been added and we'll see that on our building plans and has to do with the International Wildland Urban Interface Code. And then finally, model home building standards. When a subdivision comes in and they submit for their building permits on their model home, the building standards that apply to that model home will then in turn apply to all homes built for the next 10 years in that subdivision. So we will need to be changing our model home permit. And we'll be, of course, working with the building department to see how they're going to implement that. I'm not going to go over all these, but these are additional items that AB 130 impacted. So it is a very extensive bill. Most of these have to do with processes, taxes, funding allocation and assistance, reporting mechanisms. But if you see anything on here that you would like additional information on, staff can gather that and report back. Okay, SB 130. So how does this?
Just, council, remember to funnel that through the city manager, those questions, follow-up questions. Or through the city clerk, one of the two.
Thank you. SB 131, this is a supportive bill to AB 130. One thing that it did, the most importantly, is it created this near-miss streamlining aspect to SEQA. So if, if a housing project would have qualified for an exemption, whether it be the new statutory exemption or any of the existing categorical exemptions that we regularly apply to projects, had it qualified except for one aspect, then they are able to do a focused SEQA review. So they would only have to, the applicant would only have to address the one item that was of concern. And in the case of environmental impact reports, they would not have to do an analysis of alternatives or growth-inducing impacts. So it substantially reduces the size and scope of that document. Finally, we have a few other items here. There's a new exemption for housing element rezoning. So this will come into play, play with our seventh cycle housing element. That'll be kicking off here in the next couple of years. Basically, if there are any rezonings required from that housing element and they are incorporated into a so-called schedule of actions, then those actions would not have to undergo SEQA review. The bill also expands SEQA exemptions for certain community benefit projects. This includes childcare centers, rural health clinics, nonprofit food banks or pantries, and qualified advanced manufacturing facilities. And then finally, it clarifies what is required in the administrative record. So if a project is challenged under SEQA, the city is required to provide any written documentation that may have gone on during the review process. And this really tightens up what's required. As always, when in doubt, check with the city attorney's office. So what does this all mean for us? First and foremost, we're going to need to update our application materials. So staff has been already starting this process and reviewing our existing materials to see where and how we may need to make adjustments. We will also be making sure that our timelines are in order and in compliance with the law. And we will be updating our standard conditions of approval and mitigation measures related to air quality, tribal resources, tribal cultural resources, hazardous materials, and vehicle miles traveled. We will need to undertake some relatively minor zoning code changes. This will be related to accessory dwelling units, height allowances on those faith and higher education land projects, and the removal of limitations on childcare centers. Those changes will come before you in the next six months or so. Again, we'll be reviewing our timelines and then as lead agency, of course, we will be responsible for determining the appropriate SEQA, level of SEQA review. And I think we are going to be seeing more exemptions. And when a project does have a larger SEQA document involved, it'll just be, I guess, more focused. On the positive side, we should see more housing projects and at higher densities. And if that's the case, then in turn, they should be starting to be more affordable or attainable. And then we will have these opportunities for more grants and loans. So staff will be definitely on the lookout for those opportunities and hopefully we'll be able to bring those to you when necessary. For the council members as well as the public, all of this information from tonight comes straight from the legislation. I very much encourage you to go ahead and read it for yourself if you have the time or the desire. We have scratched the surface of it, but they, AB 130 is quite hefty. 160 pages of a wonderful, wonderful reading. And with that, I will conclude my presentation. Thank you for sticking with it. And if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. Do we have any public comments on this one?
None.
That didn't excite the public enough to ask one question or comment? Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for breaking it down so a layman like myself could understand what the heck is going on. There was one thing in that list that caught my eye, city manager, and that was seismic retrofitting funding. And I would just like to know more about that. It seems like that may be applicable for some of the...
We can follow up on that. I'm not, I'm, I'm not sure what that means, so I'm looking to the SMEs in the room. Maybe they can provide some more context for that.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you. That is it. Thank you very much. I'll open it up to my colleagues.
I just want to say thank you. I've been curious about what the SEQA reforms were. And so I appreciate this because I really was, I was hearing different sides and different arguments, and so I wasn't sure if it was a good, good thing or not, if it would be more housing, but it seems like this is something that will allow us to have, you know, more housing and streamline the process. Yeah, so thank you for that. Very helpful.
Yeah, well, welcome to the team, Sally.
Thank you.
And boy, you had a, they really threw you in there, right? Thank you, it was, as the mayor said, thank you for making it easy to understand. So with the faster processing, I, I think that's a good thing. However, I know, I don't know if you're fully staffed yet, so, you know, I hope you guys get the support you need to get there. So let us know what you need. On the, let's go to, if we could go to slide 18, please? So on the different environmental review oversight, can you explain what that is, please?
It's just an adjustment to what we're already doing. So this is a pretty hefty statutory exemption. There's a lot of requirements that a project would need to meet. So when we get entitlement projects submitted and we have, staff has 30 days to review that application, we'll be looking for these types of items. We are also updating our application materials to include checklists that will tell us right out the gate if any of these items would not work for a project, in which case the exemption would not apply. So, and then actual SEQA documents that may occur, maybe required like a mitigated negative declaration or an environmental impact report, those will, will be much smaller documents. So it should help, should help get through them faster.
Thank you. And if we can go to slide 12. On the modified height allowances, on, on this, I was hearing different things and you explained it a little bit differently, so it didn't sound that it was going to be as high as, as people feared. But essentially, there was concern out there that somebody could come in into a planned development, just decide to wipe out the existing home and then just build something that doesn't go with, with that community. Is that, you know, they were talking about two-story, because I'm looking at the parking and then the height. Is that something that HOAs and communities like that aren't going to have control over?
So this, this would apply to land that is owned or operated by recognized religious institutions or educational institutions, first and foremost. Then beyond that, this changes height allowances, either one-story or 11 feet above whatever the underlying zone may already allow, and that is to allow for the required density. So there's a required density of 30 units per acre, and so in order to get that density, many times the, the buildings need to be taller. So it doesn't necessarily, it wouldn't necessarily be outside of compatibility with the surrounding area, but it would really depend on the site.
Okay.
Sir?
Can we go to, I think it was 14, page 14, slide 14? Yeah. I'd like us a little bit of additional information on the ADU Local Ordinance Modifications. So when you have a chance, that would be some wonderful reading. 17, let me see if I got that right. Page 17, I mean not this number, 17, sorry.
Page or list?
Yeah, no, that wasn't it. Let's see, go 16, 15, 14, 15, no, 16, no, 17, 16, no, 17. Yeah, this is it. All right. So the expanding of the SEQA exemptions, and then you talked a little bit about pantries and things like that. The expansion of SEQA exemptions is just for that portion that's a food pantry that, et cetera, et cetera, whatever other buildings, constructions, remodeling, whatever you, that we were looking at.
So this creates a new exemption specific to, in this case, nonprofit food banks or pantries. So if, do they require conditional use permits?
It would depend on the location and the scope.
So all projects have to be reviewed under SEQA, and this would be a potential to exempt them from further environmental review if they fall under that category of project.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments by the council?
Thank you. That's all for me.
All right. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
It was a lot. We'll move on to item 15, which is the adopt, adoption of the updated 2025 Community Wildfire Prevention Plan.
Much better. Really loud. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and City Council Members. I am Tyler Batson, your Deputy Fire Chief. With me is Lavanna Koretke, Deputy Fire Marshal, and Caitlin Kreutz, our consultant with SWCA. Tonight, we are here to provide a brief overview of our recently completed Community Wildfire Preparedness Plan. Going over the agenda, we'll talk about what a CWPP is, why we need an updated CWPP, some of the requirements and the development. We'll talk about the process we went through. We'll talk about a mitigation, some fuel mitigation, the community risk assessments that were conducted, the community outreach efforts that we did in order to develop our CWPP, some next steps, and we'll make recommendation to adopt Resolution 2025-112. What is a CWPP? The Community Wildfire Protection Plan, or CWPP, is a comprehensive planning tool to identify wildfire risk throughout the community and make recommendations to reduce risk through fuel mitigation, public education, and improved wildfire response. Our last CWPP update was in 2011. It is recommended that we update our CWPP every three to five years to keep in line with the state fire code cycle updates, which happen every three years. This keeps our projects relevant to code changes at the state level. Having a current CWPP makes us eligible for additional grant opportunities at the state and federal level. CWPPs are meant to be a collaborative effort in both the development and utilization process. CAL FIRE is our biggest partner in wildfire response. Our CWPP contains and expands on all elements outlined in the CAL FIRE CWPP toolkit. Escondido CWPP also follows the national framework guiding wildfire management. This framework focuses on three primary goals: resilient landscapes, fire-adapted communities, and safe and effective wildfire response. Additionally, our CWPP provides resources for post-fire recovery.
This slide outlines the schedule and process for completing the CWPP. We have been working on obtaining funding for several years for various vegetation clearing, clearing grants. However, we were unsuccessful each time. With each denial, the feedback we received included our lack of CW, of current CWPP. So in 2024, we changed our grant project scope to focus on updating the CWPP and were successful. We were awarded this grant through the U.S. Forest Service.
A significant portion of our CWPP is a detailed risk assessment from wildfire to Escondido. Wildfire risk for Escondido was assessed using both computer modeling and on-the-ground This outlines some of the software tools that were used to conduct the computer modeling. It assesses both hazard and vulnerability to estimate risk. The second part of the risk analysis was the community hazard assessment. These were on-the-ground field surveys done throughout the community. SWCA fire staff rated communities on key wildfire risk factors to prioritize mitigation actions and guide CWPP recommendations. This shows the result of the community risk assessments throughout our wildland urban Community engagement is a key element of the CWPP development and implementation process. As part of this development, we provide different opportunities for community engagement, such as online and in-person community surveys, virtual and in-person public meetings, which included opportunities to review the draft CWPP, two in-person stakeholder workshops, and national night out. The CWPP identifies our most vulnerable wildland urban interface neighborhoods and provides multiple project-based mitigation plans to address risk factors, preparedness, and response. Some examples of mitigation include grant-funded targeted fuel reduction, defensible space programs, public education campaigns, and home hardening initiatives. Next steps include formal adoption of the CWPP, receiving direction from city council for priority CWPP projects, pursuing grant funding, and collaborating with city departments and stakeholders for implementation.
Here are some examples of the fuse, fuel reduction projects that are recommended for creating resilient landscapes on both public and private properties. The recommendations tables within our CWPP not only include suggested locations of work, but also potential stakeholders, how the work is beneficial, and what funding sources are available at local, state, and federal levels.
Staff recommends that city council adopt Resolution 2025-112, the Escondido Community Wildfire Preparedness Plan. Thank you very much, and staff is available for any questions.
Any public comments?
None.
Okay. I don't have any questions. Thank you for the presentation. This looks like a ton of work, so thank you for doing that, and I'll turn it over to my colleagues.
Thank you for the information. Just a quick question. The projects that we can later decide, is that going, going to be after the engagement process? I know you already start, had an engagement process, or is this what, was this a result of like the online surveys and the in-person surveys, the projects we have here?
We compiled all those in the different ways, through the surveys and through the, the stakeholder workshops, and that's what was used to help develop and hone down on some of those projects.
Okay. And then so, as far as us giving recommendations, is that like a next step thing, or is this by us approving this, these are the recommendations, and then you all decide kind of what to prioritize?
Well, I think we'll be looking to city leadership for direction on where we want to focus because it's, it's a really big and detailed plan. So there's, at some point, we're going to have to pick a project and, and work through that. So we'll definitely be looking through some priority, for some priorities.
So I think it's a combination of not just looking at this, but also looking what funding resources are going to be available on the state level. The state's just ramping up that funding, and so I think that's going to drive some of this. I know that they're very interested in mitigation and home hardening. They've just issued money, so I suspect those are the things that are going to come quickly as possibilities in front of us for decision-making. I think this gives the scope, but I think a little bit, it's going to be looking at where the, where the investment and funding is taking place to meet the need.
That makes sense. Thank you for all your work on this, and thank you to our community for participating and giving feedback.
Thank you for this. That binder that you gave us, the one that you joked about light reading, I did actually go through it in pretty solid detail. So yeah, it put me to sleep like three times. So, no, it was, it was great. It was really detailed. I do appreciate the work that went behind it. To piggyback off of my colleague's comment or question, ideally, what, what are, if it was up to you two, what kind of project would we be looking at next? Because the information that was given, I mean, there's so many directions that we can go, because you guys are the experts in this. What are you seeing as the most dire need I could imagine, but I want to hear from you?
I, I think the, the one idea that ties all these projects together is robust public education. And, and we talked about, wildland preparedness is really a community issue in order for it to be successful. The majority of land in our wildland urban interface areas is private property. So we need to get buy-in from our property owners and help them understand exactly, you know, how fire propagates through their property, encourage them to do, you know, home hardening and defensible space, and I think that will help us lead into some successful mitigation projects down the road.
And I, I know that when we had our conversation before, I think we touched on just that, the education component. I do agree, just because, as I was saying earlier, I think there's just so much information here that, I mean, when I spent, you know, a good amount of time looking through it, I was like, I don't, I didn't know half of this, and I'm sure the public doesn't know half of it either. So, okay, thank you so much for that. I do appreciate it, and I'll, I'll end it there. Thank you, guys.
And if I could add one more thing, there is a bunch of legislation that's coming, I would say, I'll politely call it the safety zone, Zone Zero, and I think that that's going to be a big push for all communities to wrestle with that particular issue and the costs around creating a safety zone around houses in those spaces, because it's hard to, to imagine that, that we're going to be able to retrofit to the, the distancing issue. But I think the thing we can help, and I was just today on a tour with the insurance commissioner and the state fire marshal of the Dixon Trails project to reinforce, and I encourage folks in the community to go out and take a look at, at a successful implementation and not be scared of that safety zone conversation. You can have a beautiful community and still have, address the issues about connectivity to fire risk, inflammable materials around your home.
So we are in a high-risk area right outside the door and inside and everywhere where it says Escondido, basically. And I have had an opportunity to tour a couple of times, a model development on home hardening and what can be done. So for me, home hardening education is going, is elemental to, to the reality. Together with that is something that we talked about when we had the 221s, contractor education. Because the contractors are key for the homeowners to understand when they're, when they're working on their home, some very simple and inexpensive changes can make the difference between their fire, their home burning down or not. So contractor education, and I understand, I believe that the, the Zone Zero will be dealing with some of that. So those are the things, and I would just put on the record, as best as I recall in my tour, was the increase on a cost of a home to home hardening it is about $3,000 more. It is not a lot of money, but yet you can save your entire home and your, there's very... and you're there's very good possibility you may even save on your on your insurance. So we can all learn about it and make an incredible difference on our homes. And and the fear, now I drive around my neighborhood, and I'm like, they need to move that. That trash can shouldn't go there. And and it's eye-opening. So thank you very much, and those are the two things for me, contractors' education and homeowners' education. Thank you.
I just want to say that was a lot of work after not having it updated for so many years, and congratulations on getting the U.S. Forest Service grant because of your hard work. And then also what what I liked hearing is that there are potential grants that we can still get because of the way it was worded and all the work that you put into it. When you spoke of, and I agree with you, robust public education is probably going to be the primary thing to to kick this off. And one thing that I think is important as we're doing that is being able to get out in the community and identify if people aren't present, but you know, get it out in the community. Identify the elderly that aren't able to do the landscaping on their own. See if there's some way that the community can come in, community organizations, you know, have that to be part of the education or communication. And then the elderly, the disabled, and but it looks like there's going to be some more funding coming in because I'm also thinking of the low income that may not have the means to be able to pay for even a removal of a tree, right? As I think you gave me an example of that when we spoke. So good job, very, very thorough. And again, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I'll move to approve Resolution Number 2025-112 and adopt the 2025 Community Wildfire Protection Plan and ask for a second.
I'll second.
Perfect. Please vote.
Voting is open. Motion approved, five zero.
Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Caitlin.
Last item is the fiscal year 2024 slash 25 financial status report and budget adjustment request.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and City Council members. My name is Christina Holmes, Director of Finance, and this evening I will be providing the financial report. This presentation will include the financial results of the general fund for the fiscal year that ended June 30th of 2025, an update on the Measure I local district tax revenue received in the first quarter of this current fiscal year, and then I'll review budget adjustment recommendations. The purpose of this presentation is to receive and file the general fund financial status report for this fiscal year, and staff is requesting that the city council approve the budget adjustment recommendations that I'll share in the presentation. So beginning with the general fund. Over the past few years, the city has changed our budgeting model to a more experienced zero-based budgeting model with the goal of revenues equaling expenses. This table shown here shows the previous five years of general fund net operating income plus the most recent fiscal year results on the far right. Actual operating revenue was much closer to operating expenses this fiscal year. Overall, operating revenue exceeded the operating expenses by $819,940 at the conclusion of the fiscal year, while revenue exceeded the projected amount by a little over $4.8 million. Operating expenses also exceeded the budget amount by $2.9 million. For the next few slides, we will go through the through the details of each one of these categories. Starting with general fund operating revenue. For each one of the categories of revenue, a five-year trend chart is shown. The totals at the bottom are the total revenue collected by fiscal year. And then the figures at the top of each bar shows the percentage increase or decrease from the prior fiscal year, as well as the net dollar amount increase or decrease over the prior fiscal year. So the city's base sales tax revenue is the largest category of revenue and makes up 33% of the total general fund. These numbers shown here do not include the revenue generated by the Measure I local district tax. Those numbers will be shown separately later in the presentation. For fiscal year 2025, actual sales tax receipts increased by $1.1 million compared to the prior fiscal year, however, are under the amount budgeted by a little over $870,000. The city works closely with its sales tax consultants in projecting sales tax revenue. The forecast used for fiscal year 2025 was provided by Avenue Insights back in May of 2024. Since then, the city has changed consultants and now uses HDL, which provided the forecast for this upcoming fiscal year that just started. So this increase in sales tax revenue that we experienced this year is primarily attributed to increases in auto sales and receipts from the county pool. Those are our two largest sales tax segments. These increases were offset by declines in general retail. Property tax revenues also represent a major funding source for the city at 28% of the total general fund. Overall, property tax revenue increased by $4.3 million or 1.4.3% or $1.6 million. Factors that influence property tax revenue are the annual inflation adjustment under Proposition 13, which is capped at 2%, and the number of home sales. Each time a home sells, it results in a reassessment of the property value. The city collects franchise fee revenues from San Diego Gas and Electric, cable companies conducting business within city limits, and Escondido Disposal Incorporated. Overall revenues received for this category decreased by $285,000. Franchises from Cox declined by $164,000, from AT&amp;T declined by $41,000, and fees from SDG and E declined by $425,000. These three declines were offset by a 10% increase or $360,000 increase in franchise fees from EEI. Transient occupancy tax, also known as hotel tax, increased by a little over $208,000. I do want to note that revenue from the short-term rental program is not included in this activity on this slide as that ordinance went into effect in July after the close of the fiscal year. So future financial updates will include that activity. All entities doing business in the city are required to have a valid business license. The business license tax collected is calculated based on annual gross receipts. Business license revenues did experience a decrease of about $182,000 compared to the prior fiscal year. This was primarily due to a transition during the end of the fiscal year and how business licenses are processed. In July 2024, the city council approved a contract with HDL to provide business license management, compliance, and collection services. The new online system successfully went live in June of 2025, and renewal letters from May and June were processed at that time. In addition to processing the renewals, HDL has also begun performing compliance audit services to ensure that all businesses in the city are operating with a valid business license.
And and I will just I will be meeting with you individually to talk about the impacts in your districts. We are seeing some significant under enrollment in our business license space due to this audit.
The next category is charges for services. This category includes paramedic fees, community service fees for recreational and community activities, and charges for development-related services, which include engineering and planning fees. In July of 2024, the city council adopted a full-cost recovery user fee model for direct benefit fees that included our development services type fees, which is building, planning, engineering, development, long-range planning. Recreation program fees were also moved closer to full-cost recovery or the top of the market. Staff will be returning to city council December 10th for a further review and analysis of that full-cost recovery user fee model. For the fiscal year, those fees were effective September of 2024. So the adoption to this fee schedule increased development services revenue by a little over $505,000, and community services program revenue increased by $47,000. Intergovernmental revenue includes the Rincon Fire Services Agreement, state-minded cost claims, various grants, and revenue received from the fire mutual aid reimbursements. The city's fire department staff can be deployed to assist other state agencies with responses to fires and other incidents. The California Office of Emergency Services reimburses the city for the time and resources for the staff deployed. As of June 2025, reimbursements of a little over $1.4 million had been recorded compared to just over $245,000 from the last year. Revenue from permits and licenses increased by $2.9 million compared to fiscal year 2024. This was also an impact of the full-cost recovery user fee model that the city council adopted and was implemented this fiscal year. In addition, construction and development activity also continues to drive building permit revenue compared to previous fiscal years. The city receives lease and rental income from city-owned properties, shared revenue with the city of San Diego for activity at the Vineyard Golf Course, and small cell tower lease revenue. Overall revenue decreased by $65,000 compared to the prior fiscal year, and this was primarily due to receipts from the Vineyard Golf Course. Fines and forfeitures is a small category of revenue in the general fund, collecting in total just a little over $8,000. Overall revenue has increased by $79,600 compared to the prior fiscal year. Investments and other revenue includes interest earned from investing activities and other miscellaneous receipts, and combined decreased by $681,000. This is primarily due to lower cash balances. If you'll recall, back in 2021, the city received a fairly large distribution from the government for the American Rescue Plan Act, over $38.8 million, which increased the available cash on hand that the city treasurer was able to invest. As we spin down those balances, our current cash that's available to be invested is lower, I would say, back to normal, excuse me, back to normal levels. So overall, for the fiscal year, the city's investment portfolio earned 3.367% interest. Moving to general fund operating expenses. So this was the operating budget that city council adopted over a year ago, back in June of 2024. The budget direction given to department heads for the formation of the operating budget was to submit line items the same level as the prior year. In addition, departments were directed to prioritize the city council's essential services. So as a result of departments minimizing their budgeted expenses and the actions listed here, removing the library cost center and Center for the Arts were both funded by the American Rescue Plan Act, removing the humane society contract that had expired in December 31st that was subsequently renewed, and then eliminating 10 full-time vacant positions from the general fund. This table shows the budget versus actual results for the fiscal year by departments. Overall, operating expenses exceeded the budget amount by $2,983, with public works, police, and fire all over the amount budgeted, which I will go through in the next slides. But first, this next table again shows the total operating expenses, but sorted by expense category with employee services in the top section. Regular salaries were under the budget amount by $5.2 million due to vacant positions. However, these savings were partially offset by increases in overtime, which exceeded the budget amount by $4.2 million. So public works include street maintenance, parks maintenance, and radio communications, and was over budgeted by $1.3 million. This was due to several unanticipated expenses this fiscal year, including overtime, an increase in SDG and utility costs, pond clearing at the Reedy Creek Golf Course, bio-monitoring at Daily Ranch, staff time for the Operation Harmony Grove efforts earlier this year. And this fiscal year, the graffiti program was fully funded by the general fund. The police department was over budgeted by $778,000. Historically, as a budget cost savings measure for at least the last 10 years, the police department has used savings and personnel costs to cover actual expenses of the police department maintenance and operations budget. As the police department vacant positions are filled and staffing levels increase, the cost savings and employee services are no longer covering the critical operational expenses. So this was addressed in the fiscal year 2026 operating budget. Measure I funds are now contributing to the overall police department budget. The fire department was over budgeted by $1.7 million. This was primarily due to overtime expenses. As I shared earlier in the presentation, the California Office of Emergency Services does reimburse the city for staff time and expenses when firefighters are deployed to assist with fire events. This revenue helps to offset the total overtime expenses in the fire department budget. That concludes the operating results for the general fund. So next, I will present the first quarter results of the Measure I local district tax. The Measure I local district tax implements a one-set sales tax increase. This additional sales tax went into effect April 1st, and the city received the first cast distribution in July. Because this is the first year of implementation for the district tax, there is some uncertainty as to the actual revenue that will be generated this fiscal year. For this first forecast, the city used two different sales tax consultants to prepare a preliminary forecast for the Measure I funds. The city's base sales tax rate is used in the projection. HDL is the city's current sales tax consultant. They projected revenue of a little over $35 million, with Avenue Insights, which was our former consultant, projecting a much higher rate at about $41.9 million. The staff recommendation when we adopted the budget was to take the average of those two, which was $38,484,150. So in the first quarter of the fiscal year, the city has received a little over $8.2 million. This is slightly lower than expected based on the city's base sales tax revenue received. However, these first payments are based on the early months of implementation, and there is often lag time as businesses are in the process of implementing the new tax. With the preliminary information, the consultants with HDL did increase their initial forecast from the original 77% of the city's base to 79%. In addition, HDL recently received the full set of data from the state, and they will be preparing a deeper analysis of those results. Also with the data received in September, HDL will be performing compliance audits to ensure that businesses have implemented Measure I and are collecting the correct tax. So this table shows the current operating budget for Measure I. A total of $31.3 million in operating expenses were approved for this fiscal year, a bit less than the current projected operating revenue. That concludes the update on Measure I. Next, I will report on the city's reserve balances. So the general fund holds two different reserve balances. The first is the Section 115 Pension Trust Fund that was established back in February of 2018. The balance as of June is a little over $37.2 million, earning a one-year rate of return of 8.62%. In addition to the Section 115 Pension Trust Fund, the general fund also has a reserve balance. This was based on a policy that the city council adopted back in December of 2015. The current balance is $17,392,319. The policy does have a target reserve balance of 25% of general fund operating revenue, which is $33.2 million this fiscal year. The general fund also has a balance of funds that have been carried over from prior years that are unallocated and available to be allocated. This includes net surplus and the law. This includes net surplus and the lost revenue funds from the American Rescue Plan Act. This fiscal year, the city sold two properties that generated over four million dollars combined. Funds from the general fund were used for Operation Harmony Grove, the temporary library relocation, and the citywide ERP software project. Adding in the eight hundred and nineteen thousand nine hundred and forty dollars of general fund operating surplus that I just reported, there are net available general fund resources of nine million ten thousand two hundred and sixty-four dollars. Next are the budget adjustment requests. So there are several budget adjustment requests that I will go through for the current fiscal year. First is the list of carryover requests. These are items that were obligated in the last fiscal year under a contract or purchase order that weren't quite completed before the fiscal year were closed. So the staff recommendation is to carry these over into the new fiscal year. That includes supplies and service fees for the Fire Department, and then some professional service agreements for Development Services. In the fiscal year 2026 Measure I Local District Tax operating budget, city council approved the purchase of three pumper trucks for the Fire Department. However, the sales tax was not included in the initial estimate, so an additional three hundred and forty-one thousand dollars is requested. Two additional vehicles are also requested, totaling four hundred and five thousand dollars for the new chief positions. Funds of one hundred and eighty thousand dollars is requested to replace six CPR devices, and an additional one hundred and seven thousand five hundred dollars is requested for operational needs. For the Police Department, there is a recommendation, a staff recommendation, for eighty-five thousand dollars for a professional services contract with Lexipol to assist with policy and procedure documents. The second are additional funds of two hundred and eighteen thousand forty dollars for the new command vehicle. So this was budget that was set aside back in fiscal year 2021, a budget of one point five million dollars, to purchase a command vehicle to replace the city's Unified Emergency Operations vehicle that was purchased in 2010. The new vehicle has been completed, and an additional two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars is requested. Also, in the fiscal year 2026 Measure I Local District Tax Fund, city council approved the addition of eight full-time park ranger positions. Additional vehicles and equipment are needed to support the staff. That's three Toyota Tacoma trucks and one UTV for Kit Carson Park totaling one hundred and ninety thousand dollars. The city clerk's office is requesting fifty-four thousand four hundred dollars to continue the city's implementation of Laserfish and to implement DocuSign for electronic signatures. For economic development, a budget adjustment for twenty-three thousand six hundred is requested for a Visit Escondido Community Calendar Platform, which will be used for posting local events and gathering community data with built-in reporting and analytics. Secondly, thirty-five thousand dollars is requested for a Visit Escondido Social Media Consultant to provide ongoing social media management and content creation. This next request is for the Library Infrastructure Project, so I'm going to turn it over to Director of Public Works Joe Goulart to speak on this one.
Thank you, Christina. Although all library window replacement would be covered by the library grant, not all of the windows can be covered by the available grant funds. Due to unforeseen change orders and increased sewer line replacement, water main improvements, modifications to the fire suppression system, electrical and structural improvements for the rooftop HVAC equipment, the remaining project contingency funds have been designated to cover these change orders. We are currently replacing about half the windows with the grant funds and are seeking your approval tonight to fund the remaining windows. If approved, all the windows at the library will meet Title twenty-four Energy Efficiency Compliance and be uniform throughout the building to match the aesthetics of the newly designed space. I'll now turn the presentation back over to Christina.
Thank you. The next budget adjustment requests are for the Development Services. First is for five hundred thousand dollars for a building plan review contract for inspection services with Inner West. The contract was approved in August, but the additional budget amendment is needed. The department was allocated several new positions as part of the fiscal year 2026 budget, of which two positions require vehicles on a daily basis for inspections. So the department is requesting the additional, the addition of those two vehicles. Salary and benefit expenses for the formerly vacant Director of Development Services position was not included in the fiscal year 2026 operating budget. So because this position has been filled, funding for the remainder of the fiscal year for the salary and benefits is requested. So the total of all those budget adjustments combined is three million eight hundred and fifteen thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars excluding the Development Services position. So the staff recommendation is to utilize the available resources in the general fund for those budget adjustments. This would leave a balance of five million one hundred and ninety-four eight hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars still remaining in the general fund. For the Director position, the recommendation is to fund the Development Services Director for the remainder of the fiscal year from the Measure I Local District Tax Fund, as this position supports the Measure I spending priorities identified in the ballot measure. So as you can see here, that would increase the total operating budget to thirty-one million four hundred and ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars. So that concludes staff's presentation. So again, this evening, we are requesting that city council receive and file the fiscal year 2025 financial status report for the internal fund and approve the recommended budget adjustments for this current fiscal year. Thank you.
Any public comments?
None.
Okay. I have a question about the two hundred and eighteen thousand for the Police Command Center. You said two hundred and eighteen thousand additional?
That's correct. So one point five million dollars was originally allocated in 2021. So by the time all was said and done, and the vehicle was delivered and fully outfitted with all of the needs, plus all the taxes and fees, it two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars in addition to the one point five is needed.
And then, did you say that receipts were down from the Vineyard?
From the Vineyard Golf Course, slightly down compared to what we really saw in the height of the pandemic in the golf industry.
I just want you to know I'm doing my part.
We appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, not down significantly, but we have seen it, both Red Creek and Vineyard, a slight decrease.
Okay, perfect. I'll turn it over to my colleagues for questions and comments.
This was a lot. I'm sure you feel it. I don't have any questions, just thank you for the information. I think, no, I think that's it. Thank you. And I'll move to approve staff recommendation.
Voting is open.
That was easier than I thought it would be. Thank you very much.
Motion approved, five zero.
All right. Does anybody have anything they'd like to add to a future agenda? Yes, sir?
Yeah, I do. Thank you. I'd like to request that the staff conduct a resident survey to gauge community sentiment and opinions on different revenue options. Can I get a second on that?
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Would you like to kick us off for our reports, too?
All right, since I'm on a roll. Last week, we went up to Long Beach, me and my colleagues. I think it was, there was some really good information that was, that we were exposed to. I learned a lot about different youth, ways to engage our youth. These are the things that I wrote down and I'll be talking to staff about, and hopefully my colleagues later. New utilities and energy ideas as well. I think there are options that we really need to start looking into. Last week, I talked about different energy options such as geothermal and nuclear. I think that we have the options of look, exploring different options like hydrogen. I think hydrogen is something that's really interesting that I learned about, and hopefully I'll be able to present that at different forums and different JPAs. Other than that, as always, thank you to my community for the privilege of serving.
Other, Garcia?
Just to say, I also attended Cal City's conference. A lot of great information there. I don't remember if we already mentioned this, but there was the Mana Authentica event. I think it was, it was, it was after our last council meeting. So I attended that, well-attended, very good information there also that was at Palomar College, and that concludes my report.
Councilmember Fitzgerald?
Yes, I too went to the Long Beach League of California Cities. And just real quick, well, Monday, let's, I'm just going to go to this week. So Monday, the thirteenth, was the National Indigenous Peoples' Day, and the mayor and I had the opportunity to go to Safari Park where Samhain Squaw Band of Kumii, they opened it to the public, free entrance, free of charge, great entertainment, storytelling, bird singers, and it was just a really good time. Following that, this Saturday, I'd like to invite everybody to come to Grape Day Park. They're going to be having an indigenous festival, celebrating the tail end of that. And again, great food, more entertainment, and a lot to see, so I hope you can come out. Other than that, oh, and Sunday, we have our Grand Avenue Street Fair, which is also including the Chamber of Commerce's Green Expo Fair. So there's going to be a lot of good things going on there. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Yes, so yes, had a great time at League of Cities Conference in Long Beach. I was a voting delegate, but we did not have any resolutions brought forward, so there was no voting done, but I did attend workshops, some, some on, there was different ones on homelessness models, and I went to the one that Redlands has an interesting project, so that was an interesting one. There's also an expo, so you can meet a lot of service providers and, you know, see all the different offerings that they have for cities, so that's always good to explore as well. Last week, I had the opportunity, again, to visit my former elementary school, Lincoln Elementary. So fun, the fourth graders there, there was about eighty students in the multipurpose room. They create their own town hall, and they memorize the questions, and they run the show. And they asked me some very hard questions from homelessness to economic development to water quality. I was really impressed with them. So kudos to them. I will be having, Friday, I have a San Diego River Park JPA meeting and a budget subcommittee meeting before that. Saturday, I will be at the Center for the Arts for the 10th anniversary of the Kalitzlan Dance Academy that was here. And Sunday, I'll be at the Street Fair. And Monday, there is a dedication of the newest mural on the Creek Trail called Resilience. So it'll, you can meet at Washington Park at the Creek Trailhead. This Monday, October twentieth, at five thirty, the community is invited, and I'll, I'll see you there.
Okay. Last week, I was the speaker for the Chamber of Commerce Governor, Government Affairs Committee, which was fantastic. The room was packed, and everybody's excited about what's going on in the city of Escondido. I also had LAFCO and Sandag meetings, but nothing notable came out of that. Went to Lincoln Elementary School to a third-grade class and got to do, I think, similar to what the deputy mayor said, and it was fantastic. They had been practicing debating and moderating, and they had different students come up and go through some questions. It was, it was a lot of fun. I also was at the Indigenous Peoples' Day Celebration at Safari Park, where we declared the day Indigenous Peoples' Day in Escondido. What else do I have here? Oh, I was at a roundtable with the new president of SDG and E with all the other mayors, which was kind of interesting. He seems well aware of the skyrocketing price of energy, and it'll be interesting to see if he has some ideas on how to tackle that. This Saturday is the first annual Native American Heritage Festival in Grape Day Park from ten AM to five PM. Be there, we'll issue a proclamation at ten o'clock, and then the real fun will begin after that, and I too will be at the Street Fair Sunday, so I'll see you there. City manager?
Nothing to report.
Fantastic. Any other comments?
None.
This meeting's adjourned.